Thank you so much. I know, I found one in the bottom of the car, but no, I thank you. Okay, thanks. Oh hey, what happened?
Well, I'm sitting here.
Uh, maybe yes. Yeah, I see the white, I need those. They emailed it to you as well.
Well.
I got it.
It's not a problem.
What, what are we? Yeah, whatever it is, they either... Okay.
Thanks for having me, guys. I'm excited. Very excited. I'd love to talk to you.
Hello. Is it me you're looking for?
By the way, I do have to say this, one thing I learned about kids. Not that he sings, but where he sings.
Also don't panic down the street saying, "You're welcome." You're welcome. You're welcome. Okay, that's right.
Okay. I just want to let everyone know, due to our great traffic problems that we have in our county, we're still missing Councilman Whitehurst and Councilman Hendricks. And so we're gonna, we've gotten a phone call from them and they should be about ten or fifteen minutes out. So we do want to wait all we can because we think this is important that we all hear this. So I really appreciate y'all's patience. Talk amongst yourselves.
See, I know, with y'all on that.
We're gonna, we're gonna ask guys like you to come and tell us what's wrong with it.
Hey, Isma. This is a DOT road we've got a problem with.
This is a DOT road we have a problem with. I know.
I did thank Gerald.
Good Gerald.
Yes, sir.
We're here.
Where were you at lunch, man?
Where were you at lunch?
Yeah, we had the, the leg slayer. Chinese.
What the hell was that? Yeah, I mean, the place was good, we were putting the dishes out.
We had some, actually, good food. Table, there's water, by the way. I never heard of water.
That's a good one. Oh, they pay us. Don't let them use our building. Sure.
Honestly, this was a good one. I didn't see it until I was seeing it.
You know, you play on the trail, it's like... These make them sick. Riding on the trail, it's like... At least you said it's harder. But they make it make them looker-y. No, it's the other way around.
Sorry, gentlemen.
No problem, sir. No problem.
Bridge washed out on Bell Shore Road, so don't go that way.
They're doing reconstruction over there, right? Bridge construction.
No, but I had you all the way.
I've got some emails about them, how they reconstruct the bridges and stuff like that.
I had you all the way back six miles. How we doing?
All right.
Yeah, about the bridge. Morning, just do it different way. You told it on yourself.
I didn't see the, I didn't, when did the email come? I looked at emails today.
Two or three weeks ago, about three or four, several.
Oh, God. Somehow, you know, that register in your brain? You're just like, okay, everything's normal.
He just told it on himself.
Old age, man.
Are you ready, sir?
I'm ready.
I'll go ahead and call us to order and I appreciate everyone's patience. We made an announcement that it was all the traffic in Pickens County. And of course, we had a comment, what are we doing about that?
So you handled it, right?
Councilman Thiem, so did I. I want to welcome you all here. Thank you so much for taking the time to come out. And this is our committee, the whole meeting. We're, this is an opportunity for us to really conduct the business the way we're, of where we're informed and have more of a discussion and find out about all things going. It's odd for us to be in here, but we had to move it to this auditorium so that we could accommodate all of you. And it's, it's really exciting to see so many people that care so much to be here. So thank you for that. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Councilman Whitehurst for an invocation and pledge.
Dior, we give you thanks for this great day we have. Thank you for the rain, so desperately needed. Thank you for the people out there in this county that have come here to participate in our government, the way it works. We ask for your guidance and wisdom as we go forward doing the people's business. We ask for your protection for our soldiers across the world protecting us. And a special prayer for those famous before the assholes in question.
To the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So our first item for Committee of the Whole Meeting is our senior center with the town of Central, log number eighty-seven. Mr. Wilson, if you will, please.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As you're aware, Pickens County currently owns the building located in Central at one twenty Commons Way. For about the last year and a half, Pickens County has leased the building to the town of Central. The town of Central recently submitted a request to Pickens County. They would like for the county to consider donating the building to them as a joint venture with them and Meals on Wheels. Mr. Tom Clor and Ms. Meta Bowers is here tonight to speak to you about that situation. Tom?
Thank you very much for allowing us to come up. Again, the town of Central has been leasing these old senior center for about a year and a half now. And we've done a lot of the inside renovations and we've been using it for childcare as well as some other senior programs that are run by our recreation departments. And what we're looking at doing now is the town of Central has been approached by both the Meals on Wheels and the Clemson Institute for Engaged Aging for a partnership working with our senior community. The town of Central, again, and a lot of our program as we went into this past summer, was really ramping up a lot of our senior programs and then we had to stop them because of the heating and air not working well. We spent quite a bit of money trying to get the air going. Again, that's original air and I think that building is probably twenty, twenty-two years old. It has two big HVAC units. Needless to say, all the work we did didn't do much good. One unit is barely functioning, the other one is offline. And of course, to fix them, like usual, they are placed in the roof system so that you're gonna have to take open the roof to get those out and replace them. But anyhow, needless to say, we're looking at quite a bit of money on all of this. Looking at over thirty-eight thousand just for the heating and air and the, to fix the roof where we're gonna have to take it apart. And of course, being able to acquire grant funds, you have to own the facility. So one of the things we first looked at is did the county want to take this on sponsoring the program so that like Meals on Wheels and those that we're partnering that can apply for these funds may be doing it that way. But the town of Central would really like for you to consider giving us that building. We have a lot of positive uses for it. Again, we've got Meals on Wheels and I'm gonna have Meta Bowers come in just a minute and Ms. Cheryl Die, who is with Clemson University, and explain some of the programs that we will be running. That senior center have turned over to us, we will be using it five days a week, almost all day long, with these senior programs. In exchange, what we're gonna be doing is because Meals on Wheels doesn't exist in the central area. It's in Liberty. There's another form of it that's down in Clemson, but we don't have that in the central area. So what the town of Central is willing to do is to let them have the building rent-free, pay for utilities. We'll take care of the maintenance. We'll take care of all that just because we believe in the need of taking care of our senior citizens. Those of you, a lot of you know me, I was raised mostly by my grandparents. So that was always a special place in my heart and therefore I've always enjoyed working with our senior population. And that's just one of the things that we, we need to be doing and taking care of. And right now, we don't have that in the central area. So this would open that up again. One of our other issues that we face, for those of you know, we've got a Central Clemson Indoor Recreation Center there that's very, very popular. Parking is a premium. And one of the issues we have, if you ever come down, especially when our youth basketball is going on, we've got forty-nine youth basketball teams and they're parked everywhere. And we have to monitor, make sure they're not blocking EMS, all of that. One of the things we'll be able to do is we do have some property on the backside of the senior center. But this would also allow us to create some more parking so that we not, we can do a lot more programming with that center. But also we'd have parking tied in with our indoor rec center. And then our indoor rec center is going to continue the programs that they do. We have a very large senior population that's using our recreation center and involved in a lot of the activities, everything from our water aerobics to, I'm trying to think of the game where they used, it's a popular, it's like tennis, except pickleball, thank you very much. I couldn't remember the name of it. And that has become very popular. But again, we would like for you to strongly consider because we are willing to take this over. The town of Central is also willing because we know how this, how valuable these buildings are, that if for any reason the town of Central no longer had a use for that, that it would revert back to the county. We have no problem with doing an agreement like that. But again, if turned over to us, that allows us to tap into those grant funds for us to be able to put in this HVAC, fix up the inside and do all these things for the senior program. Right now, I'm gonna ask that both Meta and Cheryl step up so they can just tell you a brief minute about those programs so that you'll see what we're wanting to do with this facility and how we can, how we can partner with them so that we can fix this building back up kind of into its pristine age like it used to be.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Council, for letting us have this opportunity to address you. Pickens County Meals on Wheels is a countywide organization. We built the McKissick Center in Liberty in two thousand and fifteen. We opened and we use the same type of PIP funding to refurbish that facility with the long-term vision to have reopen satellite services in this county where they were needed. We have looked at offering, offering a satellite active senior center in Easley area and have that in the back burner. But all the dots started lining up in Central and seemed to be the best fit. The city of Clemson Recreation is offering senior services to seniors right now. The city of Central is offering services to seniors right now. But really, that's our wheelhouse and that's what we focus on and that's what we want to do. This funding that Tom has spoken of is PIP funding. It comes from the Lieutenant Governor's Office on Aging and it is basically bingo tax money. So the bingo parlors that are throughout the state, they generate a tax on the state level and then they're distributed for the purpose of refurbishing facilities as a focal point for senior services. So that building in Central, which was formerly run by Seniors Unlimited, will be refurbished with the heating and air, the walls, the interior, making it a place that people want to come and feel active and engaged. We will still produce the meals that would be served there in Liberty in our central kitchen and then transport them. So they would offer five days a week senior programming for anybody over the age of sixty. It would include bingo, exercise, structured activities, field trips, meals. Basically, a place to come have fun and engage and socialize with your peers. Second to that, Cheryl is here from the Clemson Institute for Engaged Aging. And that idea came about through the Appalachian Council of Government reaching out to Cheryl and then reaching out to Meals on Wheels as the senior provider in Pickens County. And the idea is at the site is to make it also a respite program for early dementia and early Alzheimer's clientele. And right now, in that Central and Clemson area and even a little bit over into the Anderson and Seneca area, there's a real gap in service for those individuals. And I think as anybody here might not want to admit, the population is aging. Nobody in here is getting any younger and the population will double in the next fifteen years. So part of what we're trying to do is be proactive in our approach and be ready to serve seniors in all parts of the county where the majority of the residents reside. And not just make it for poor, old people, which I think is typically the stigma, but to make it to be where my mother wants to go, your mother wants to go, and a place that's inclusive for everybody in the county, not just the select few who can afford Clemson Downs and some of the more exclusive areas. Downs and some of the more exclusive areas in the, in the county. So, I'm going to let Cheryl explain just a little bit about the, what Clemson Institute for Engaged Aging is and what the respite program would look like.
Thanks for having us here tonight. I'm glad to be here. The Clemson University Institute for Engaged Aging was established in 2006. I've been the director since that time. It's a place for all faculty and students interested in promoting the quality of life for older adults to gather and put together their ideas and apply for funding and so forth. And we do a lot of different programs. In the past, my programs have been offered in churches and other places around the area. For instance, this week, I'm starting a program for fall prevention over in Seneca. I also started a respite program over in Seneca as well for people with dementia. My mother died from Alzheimer's disease a couple of years ago and that really heightened my personal commitment to helping families challenged by this disease. Eleven percent of people sixty-five and older will get Alzheimer's disease or related disorders. So, it's pretty scary and families are struggling to meet that need. So, the program that we established in Seneca is what is similar to what we'll do here in Central Clemson area. But we'll do it two days a week here and it'll be for people with early to mid-stage dementia. My students come over and offer programs and activities. They do songs and artwork and crafts and so forth and they just really have a blast. The people that come collect the club. So, my students get a great education about working with this population and the people who come there certainly enjoy it. And those family caregivers get a break and that's where it gets the term respite. They get a break from that caregiving role, which is pretty overwhelming. So, I would love to have a home for the programs that we do in the community. Instead of going from place to place to place, it'd be nice to take all of our programming in one place and that would be a great benefit, not only to the seniors in our area, but for us to be able to sustain programs in the long run. Thanks for the consideration of this.
And again, we just want to reiterate, the Town of Central is excited about this opportunity and that's why we're willing, if we can have this facility, because they don't have the funds for all the rent and all of that with this thing. We're willing to absorb that into our general fund. We'll be able to apply for some other funding to help, to help take care of some of those costs. But this will allow us to have these programs there. And we're willing to be able to provide for them a place rent-free, take care of their utilities. We'll provide our custodial that handles our indoor rec center since they're side to side to be able to take care of that. And we'll also take care of the maintenance for them. So, we ask you to please strongly consider this. We think this is a great opportunity. And do you have any questions from me?
You said the building is twenty-two years old?
I, I think, Gerald, do you know the exact age of it? I know our rec center is pushing twenty-one and they were both built, I think that one was there before our rec center was built.
Yeah, I read this letter was sent to us and there was no address and I was trying to use Google Maps to find this, but I had to drive down there and check it out. Where's this building at in relation to the rec center?
The rec center, if you're sitting, are you familiar with our recreation center?
I am.
Okay, when you're looking, if you look straight across our parking lot, there's a building on the other end.
I'm looking at the area view of it right now.
Yes, sir, and it's, it's right in the curve. It's right on the other end of the parking lot.
Is that right there?
Here's the, yes, right there.
Okay. Now, you're talking about, what you're talking about putting the parking lot at?
On the backside.
Because I know it's like the Freon Hall on the other side of it.
Right. On the backside where the woods are going towards the summit, we actually own that property that's down in the bottom on the backside of it. So, by being able to take this, we've got a small section of land, we could actually make it a little bit bigger coming up the backside of the building so we'd have parking for that facility and as well as our indoor, it tied all together.
What's, what's in that building now?
We've been using it for childcare and some of our senior programs. We, we kind of redid the area, went in, repainted, had to do a lot of work just from the, because it'd been down for so long, we reworked some of the heating and air best we could. And like I said, we've, we've done that to where it's, it's, it's got to be replaced.
Because I know, I know what the Paygood Center in Pickens does and people, that's their highlight to go there. So, I know the value of it.
Yes, sir. And it, it was popular in its time. You know, it was owned, I think, by Senior Solutions, is that right? Seniors Unlimited. And then when they, when they went under, then the facility went away as well. Because we used to tell them, we volunteered to do a lot of things for them. We were always sending our guys down to help them with their little garden and anything we could do. And actually, we were running programs for them. So, we hated to lose that, those seniors then that were using it. It was closed down.
I have a question.
Councilman, please, sir.
How many square feet is that building? Do you know?
Yes, sir. I was looking at, I think it's about twenty-two hundred square feet, I believe is what it is. And it's broken in, we've got a kitchen area and a large meeting room. It's basically split in half. You've got a hallway that splits it right in half. One half of it is a kitchen and we can remove all the tables, have a big activity area. The other side, right now, they, we've still got the old pool table in there from the old Seniors Unlimited. And then there's a storage room and then there's another activities room where we've got computers and all that set up for kids and some of our senior programs, which they'll be accessing. And we've also got a security camera system we've put in to watch over it, so.
Councilman Bell, Mr. Wilson. Do you know the history on the building and how we ended up with it? If it was the Seniors Unlimited building?
Yes, sir. I know a little bit of the history. You might, might be able to attest to it a little better than I can. Seniors Unlimited originally built this building. They built it on county property. When Seniors Unlimited went defunct, the building was left sitting in the county, actually ended up as the owner of the building. We had, we had property with no lease on the, no lease or anything on the property, so we ended up with the building. Essentially, the county has no, no cost in this building here. Seniors Unlimited had built and paid for it. I think that's correct, right, Trey?
Yeah, and we were, I think we made an agreement, we were leasing it to you on a long-term lease for like a dollar and you took care of all the maintenance.
Yes, sir.
So, you all basically kept keeping the building anyway.
Yes, sir. But it's just at the point now that we can't apply for the funds.
Now, you can't do what you want to do because you're a long.
Right. Yeah, we can't apply for any funds to fix it up or anything because, as you know, you've got to usually be the owner to be able to pursue those.
Any other questions? Any, any other recommendations from the committee?
You know, this is something I've mentioned before when we talked about the things that we gave them that property up there and I thought, you know, we're going to do that for one city and try to treat everyone the same, to do the same for Central here. Now, obviously, there's a reason for it now, in a very particular reason for it. So, I think it's a good deal for us.
Well, I applaud Meta, your work that you've done at the McKissick Center is extraordinary. And if you guys can get this kind of funding and offer those same services, you know, my grandfather, ninety-eight years old, still goes to the McKissick Center and he enjoys that each and every day. I don't know which one of the guys said it, but they, they really think it's you, they really look forward to doing that. I'm, I like the idea that you're saying that we, if for some reason something happens, it comes back to the counties and districts.
Well, we have to agree to that.
There's that opportunity there, but this gives you the opportunity to take something that is small and do something extraordinary with it.
Yes, sir. We're, we're needing the space to be able to do that.
Can I ask one question?
Sure. Yeah, go ahead.
From the legal standpoint, this is an ordinance we do. It's a transfer in three readings and we can, it's a, it's a motion out of committee to the main council.
Yes, sir. The motion would come out of committee to the full council and it will require three, first reading of the ordinance, it requires three readings and a public hearing.
I'd like to make that motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second by Councilman Hudson. Any other discussion on this? The motion is to take it out of committee, begin first reading to begin this process to get, okay, we're all cool. All those in favor, stick a thought about raising your hand. All right? The motion carries. Thank you guys.
Thank you very much. We, we really appreciate your faith in us on this.
We'll move on to our, our next item. Review of Fire Boards in Districts, Countywide, log number fifty-five. Mr. Wilson?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. As Councils are aware, and I think the members of the public are aware, Pickens County recently created an Emergency Services Board. This board will be looking at emergency services, the whole of fire, rescue, EMS and emergency management. They've got, got a possible proposal for Phase One ready to go. We've got Mr. Willowman here ready to present. I don't know if you want to introduce our board or not, but I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Willowman.
So, good evening. Thank you for having us here and I'd like to introduce our board. Tracy Woodruff, Kenny McPeters, Johnson Link and Tom Turner. And my name is Al Willowman. And I would like for us to recognize that about a month ago, a little bit over a month ago, we did have one of our board members tragically pass away. And he was actually our board chair, who was, who was instrumental in helping us get started. So, if you will, please remember Tim Cobb and his family. So, this board was formed to look at it, to look at the emergency services within Pickens County. And one of our first tasks that we identified was the fire service. And part of what you'll see tonight is what we feel like is a comprehensive plan that will help enable the fire service to be moved toward the future and to really get some solid ground up underneath it. Our objective was to improve the level of fire protection throughout the county, establish a master plan to provide the best possible emergency services to the citizens of Pickens County, implement an organizational structure to allow for growth and efficiency and accountability, establish a plan to upgrade and replace worn-out and out-of-date equipment that's currently still in service within the county without taking on any new debt, improve communications and emergency scene safety of all first responders. The current status of the county fire protection. You currently have thirteen independent fire districts. There's inconsistency in funding with each fire, fire district's fees versus millage, inconsistency in fire protection from one district to another, whether it's, whether it's a large fire district or maybe a smaller fire district. Organizational structures that hampers unity and efficiency. You currently have volunteers that volunteer with multiple fire departments. So, trying to, I'm trying to come up with a structure that would help enable them to maybe not have to be with so many different departments. Difficulty of training, recruitment and retention of volunteers. Pickens County cannot operate without volunteers. And since nineteen eighty-six, the, the International Association of Fire, International Association of Fire Chiefs did a study and they have found that there's been a steady decline of volunteer firefighters throughout the nation. And Pickens County is, is not immune to that. We feel that this plan would help us to enable a program that would help to not only train but equip, but also recruit and retain the current volunteers in place. Increased demand on the fire service. There's been call volumes increased with, with, with the population growth along with an aging, you know, an aging population, but also with medical calls. Many districts spend money on duplicating services. You have a lot of fire departments that, that, that need equipment for ISO purposes or whatnot, so you have a lot of duplication of services. One thing that we found is that the current age and function of the equipment was something that drew to our attention. You have currently thirty-one total pumpers currently in service protecting Pickens County. Ten and, ten of those thirty-one are reserve pumpers with an average age of twenty-six years old. Out of the twenty-one frontline pumpers, only six are less than ten years old within the county. Average age for the county, sixteen and a half years old. NFPA nineteen oh one suggests that a frontline pumper be less than fifteen years old and the total service life of a pumper be less than twenty-five years old unless, unless a refurb has been done. Currently, by the time that this would, would be put in place, only two fire districts would comply with NFPA nineteen oh one. It would cost taxpayers approximately five point six million dollars today to comply with NFPA. There's also tankers that are needed to help within the county due to water supply issues within some of the rural areas within the county. Some financial considerations. Most fire districts do not have the current revenue to make capital purchases needed. They would have to increase their fees substantially to be able to purchase needed equipment and also some needed manpower within some areas that could use additional protection. County residents currently do not receive the same level of fire protection throughout the county regardless of the fire fee. By pooling monies and resources, it would allow for greater efficiency and less wasted tax dollars. A tax millage would ensure that everyone pays a fair and equitable share for fire protection. Currently under a fee structure, you're, you're not allowed for any future growth because the fee is locked in. We are going to propose that a millage fee of twenty-five mils be assessed to the fire service, which would then incorporate fifty thousand dollars or less. A residential structure, eleven out of the thirteen fire districts would actually see a decrease in fire protection cost for their, for their property. A hundred thousand dollar or less structure, six thousand, I'm sorry, six out of thirteen would see a decrease. And then at two hundred and fifty thousand K or more, eleven out of thirteen would see an increase. We feel that a majority of the population would actually fall below that. Currently, vehicles, open land and recreation vehicles are not taxed under the current fee system. Current fire service budget revenue of the thirteen fire districts is six point two million dollars. Twenty-five mils would help generate seven point seven million. Most all fire districts would have to raise fees substantially to provide the needed revenue to replace needed capital or needed capital. Basically, this funding is the same way that you fund the Sheriff's Department now. The vision for the fire service of Pickens County is to implement a unified management structure, improve fire, fire protection throughout the whole county, streamline operations, will, will provide the necessary funding for, for the needed growth, build a comprehensive capital plan to replace aging and outdated equipment, provide additional funding for stations and for remodeling of existing stations, provide funding for additional firefighters for, to provide twenty-four hour protection in areas to help improve ISO ratings, establish a first-class fire service to aid in training, recruitment and retention of volunteers, establish a funding source to meet the growing demands of the fire service, provide funds needed for current and future stations, establish an equipment replacement schedule based on need, service life and maintenance requirements, purchase equipment each year to, to avoid equipment aging at the same time. I mentioned earlier, five point six million dollars is what would be needed. Obviously, if, if you purchase five point six million dollars today, there comes a time to where all of that equipment would need to be replaced at the same time. This plan also allows capital to replace equipment each year without the needs of recurring bonds and tax increases. The purchasing power that this would provide over the next five years, over eleven million dollars available for capital improvements. The purchase of ten new pumpers, the purchase of five new tankers, two and a half million dollars set aside for station upgrades and future land purchases, one point eight million dollars for the, for, for the purchase of personal protective equipment, self-contained breathing apparatus and turnout gear, and seven hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars for the purchase of brush trucks and command vehicles. Plus, we would still have over three million dollars in reserves. It would allow us to replace a third of the first-line pumpers within the county, replace and add a third of the tankers within service in, in the county. Basically, you see a third of brush trucks, increase firefighter coverage by thirty percent. The political landscape, no one likes change, but change is inevitable. The county has to look at, look to change the current fire service within Pickens County. The master plan is a short and long-term solution to an adequate system, allows a one-time millage, eliminates recurring fire fees, allows, that will allow for growth and for much-needed coverage that's currently not provided in some parts of the county. Eight fire districts would need to raise fire fees substantially to facilitate any growth. The current system of raising fees when growth is needed causes a shock to the current This is going to be a hard slide for some of you all to read, but basically this slide, slide here gives a breakdown of the current fees and also the twenty-five mils that would be assessed. As you see at the top, it's a fifty thousand dollar resident, hundred, two fifty and five hundred. As you see at the top, it's a $50,000 resident, one hundred, two fifty and five hundred. A five-year projection would look like this. Tax revenue of 7.7 million. We would have a reserve balance of $5,830,000. As a board, we have looked at keeping a 50% reserve cash on hand within our reserve account, which would then allow us to be able to take the other remaining portion of that. So year one, we would have three million dollars that could be allocated toward a number of purchases. Obviously, we broke that down with buying two pumpers a year, so on and so forth. Any questions?
Yes. You're going to get a lot. So, start with Councilman Bowden. This is again Mr. Green, I have questions for Wilson. I don't know, but I know currently with the way the fire system is set up in the county, you have bonds here, you have bonds here, you have bonds here, you have bonds here. How do you, how do you address those?
Uh, Dr. Almond, turning, and here's a way to do that, like I said, the fire thing, they're always talking to all the people, they're always, they're, they're, they're very high in the fire quality, they're, 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 they're on the fire, they're, 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 they're on the fire.
I have a question. So when you're talking about properties and homes, and I'm just trying to get my mind wrapped around it, you're talking about the millage goes just against, just against property with homes or against any property?
Any property. So it'd be, it would be the same tax system as what's in place for the sheriff's department for other funding mechanisms within the county.
Okay. So many years ago, that's a nightmare when vacant land tax came about.
Sure.
You know, I've got several questions on many different slides, y'all bear with me on this, going back to the current status. One thing, I teach high school and I haven't seen a concerted effort for these people to get inside the schools during lunchtime to recruit volunteers. Now, you're talking about, oh, but you gotta, you gotta work it, just remain on the first center alone in the fire safety class. And how, how about there, it's not enough. I just really think that somebody from the fire needs to be in our schools during lunch, talking it up with the folks in class or in the class and also at lunch, and get kids involved with that. For, going to the next slide. NFPA 1901, can you elaborate what that means?
Yes, so NFPA 1901 is a standard that is set forth for the fire service as a guideline. And in that standard, it actually addresses the age and the functionality of trucks and equipment, apparatus. And currently, you want to use that as kind of a rule or a guideline. It's not saying that you've got to follow it to the letter of the law, but it's not if, it's when you do something. So if you don't replace a piece of apparatus now, then you're going to replace it sooner rather than later. But the problems don't go away, I guess.
Now, what kind of shape is the equipment now? I mean, is it not well-maintained? Is it not service regular? Is it material?
Well, I would say that ongoing PMs, preventive maintenance work is performed, pump testing and things like that, that NFPA states has to happen. However, your average age of a pumper, a first-line pumper in the county is sixteen and a half years old, which is a year and a half older than what NFPA suggests as a frontline pumper. So you have age working against you as far as if it's not, it's not if, it's when it breaks down and it becomes less reliable when you're on scene of any type of incident of whether or not it's going to perform.
Now, you mentioned in there wasted dollars. Did y'all see much evidence of wasted money within the different districts?
We didn't dive into each district as far as their budget. We actually didn't have, I guess we had access for it for what's on the county's website or whatnot. But most of us have either been a part of the system or in the system, so we have some details about the system. And when you look at each fire district, maybe doesn't need a tanker. Each fire district possibly doesn't need to have a, you know, have a compressor. And you have some districts now that actually share those resources, but they're not shared with maybe some other districts. And what, and what, and what that would free up is monies to be able to spread resources out throughout the whole county.
Is that not what you have right now? Your, uh, care of the equipment? You traded it and stuff like that?
Yeah, Billy Gibson, Billy? I'm gonna let him step to the podium. If you don't mind, Billy, you might address him, Mr. Watson.
Well, it's a lot more, you know, with the, with the, with the, uh, 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 uh,[1033.13]
And, and the public really needs to, and that's just my opinion. The public needs to have a voice in this because there are going to be one paying the bills. And, uh, so I don't know what, how we need to, how we need to do that. Uh, I'm willing to, I mean, I think all of us would be willing to do some town halls and, of course, have somebody there that can say, you know, this is what your fire fee is. And have that discussion.
Is there a chance to do a step increase to get you to go without having to pay for it?
Well, I think you've got to look at what we've been tasked to do is to improve service. So, we don't feel like we can improve anything until we get a funding vehicle in place that allows for that growth. If we do nothing tonight, or if you all do nothing on this plan, you're going to be faced with fire districts that's going to have to come to you to raise their fees substantially to be able to make ends meet, much less provide any additional funding for growth.
So you believe that what they're going to come to us for fire fees is going to be incremental of what this plan provides?
We discussed, there's currently three fire districts that would need to increase their fire fees, right now, just to break even and make ends meet. So, that does not provide any additional funding for any growth whatsoever.
Um, I got, my first question is, where's Scott?
He's in Alaska.
This was a pre-planned vacation. His daughter's in the military. He, he's moving her up.
He had asked for us to move the meeting and we couldn't get him for other dates.
I would like to see Scott presenting his plan, start with nothing against you now. You're a nice guy, I know you.
Offense taken, sir.
One of my, one of my questions to Scott, and I'll ask it to you, is, we were told you've been to all the rural fire districts and been to all the board meetings, you talked about this.
We as a board have not, but Scott has.
Scott has been to, has he been to every rural fire meeting?
Chief Gibson, uh...
Okay, one of the things that I think Carl was talking about is that, to do anything, we've got to go to the resource we have, which is that rural fire boards in those fire districts can find out what they know and what their resources are and what their ideas are. And, from what I'm hearing, that's not happened. Um, and, I feel like, you've made this statement twice, funding first, plan second. And, and to me, you've got to come up with a plan, and I thought that's what we had tasked you to do. And, and, and please, don't, don't take offense to this, but I think we need to come up with what our overall plan is. When we talked about this as a board, and I've been wrestling with this fire issue since I've been on council. And, one of the things we want to see is where these district lines are, and how those resources can be shared, and how the best way to serve the, the public is, and you talk about restructuring and those things, I think that's the whole plan we need to look at. What I see is a way to increase taxes and buy a bunch of trucks. Now, I looked over that NFPA, and I tried to find what they talked about in there. Now, you're an expert in this, this is your business.
Yes, NFPA 1991, NXD.
And what it, what I've read, and help me if I'm wrong on this, it talks about that age. I didn't see a, a definite recommendation, but one of the things it talked about is trucks have usefulness, can be up to 25 years, no problem. Depending on how they're used, most of the updates is safety equipment, they have to have fire, uh, seat belts on them and some adjustments like that. So there could be equipment out there that has a much longer life to it before we start looking at replacement. And I think the first thing, if we're going to look at buying new equipment, is to find out the condition of our existing equipment. Now, what I read, now you correct me if I'm wrong here, is it gave a whole list of things to look at, I will look you under appendix D, okay? Where it said there are many things that are up, can be upgraded on there that aren't huge cost. And it really depends on how much the truck is used. Except if the truck is used a lot, it may only last five or six years. But depending on how it's used and the condition it's in, it's how it's up kept, it could go to 25 years without a problem. Is that true?
It can go up to 25 years, it, it can go to 30 and 40 years.
Just depending on how it does, so, so, what, what I'm seeing is that we're talking about replacing, you know, we've got this not compliant with NFPA, but NFPA is not a, it's just a suggestion, everything in there is what our suggestions is, we're not being hurt by ISO because we don't have trucks that are less than 15 years old. Is that correct?
You are not being affected by ISO, however, there are some situations where there's needed equipment for ISO, that's not...
And they have certain upgrades on that. So, I'm, I'm very, I'm very reluctant to go into a mass, let's just throw a bunch of money out there, and, and you said you want a 50% reserve, is what you were talking about. We don't have a 50% reserve in the county.
Well, currently, the fire districts do. A lot of the fire districts have...
They don't all have 50, you just said three of them can't even function.
Right, but some of them do have reserves that would still be needed to fund a fire district.
Right, right, but, but having a plan, you've planned to have a 50% reserve is, is...
That could be available, right.
It's actually only a close to that 25% reserve, if you're, what you're calling your capital cost, you're calling a reserve as well. And that's not really reserve, that's capital cost.
We're, we are deducting the capital cost from the actual reserve balance, so it is 50% of operations. Whatever the operations is for that year, then it would be 50, it'd be 50% of that.
You're really having like two and a half million versus five million.
Right, oh, right, it's $2.5 million in reserves, yep. Right, and there's currently over $3 million in reserves within the county, within the fire districts.
I, I think, I have a lot of concerns about coming up with a funding mechanism without a plan.
Well, as far as the plan goes, keep in mind, we were tasked to, to, to actually do a job, and part of that job was to look at a vision for Pickens County, and part of that is, part of what you have here is a plan. It gets rid of those district lines, it gets rid of a lot of that. But, how do we come up with a plan without knowing how much money you're going to have to plan with?
Well, I guess, my, my thing would be, let's come up with a plan and see how much it costs. Because what the point is, is to give the citizens of Pickens County the best fire protection at the lowest cost available, okay? So the idea that I thought in, in tasking you guys, if we just eliminate lines, we're going to have chaos, you know? We've got to figure out where trucks go, how things are going to be set, how, what kind of staffing we're having in there, how we're, all those intricate details is what the plan needs to be, okay? And I, that's kind of what I was looking at, is how do we mechanically do this? What I'm seeing is, let's raise taxes 25 mils, and then we'll come up with a plan on how to spend it. And I know the way government works, if we give government money, they'll figure out a way to spend it. Um, I, I would be more like, let's see what it takes to do it, and then figure out what it's going to cost. That's just my approach and...
Right, and I would say that's what we've done...
The rest of the council could be different on that, but that's my feeling.
Right, I would say that's what we've done, by looking at having stations within the counties that need upgrades, that currently have no funding for upgrades. We've kind of laid that out. Have we laid out exactly what station would get upgraded in what year? No. Have we laid out that the first truck bought would go here? No. Because there's still a needs assessment that would have to be done. And keep in mind, the long lead times of some of this equipment could be a year plus out, so the needs may change over that time. But has a plan been discussed? Well, yes. That's what you have here. If, if, and I mean, if you read into that, it's not just raising 25 mils taxes on everyone, and, and then going out and buying a bunch of trucks. I can tell you this, most residents within the county would actually see a reduction in taxes.
Well, maybe on their house, but you add in their cars and their boats and everything else, it may be an overall tax increase.
Okay, so, if you...
Have you looked at the whole number, or are you just looking at the houses?
No.
I see as the houses, right? But we are taxing all property, right?
Cars and boats.
Oh, we are taxing...
We are.
We are taxing the cars, cars and boats.
Yes, cars and boats, that's currently not taxed.
Right.
Actually, uh, you would still have a decrease, because what this slide does not represent is what the fire districts need to raise their fees now to break even.
But, but have you gone to all the fire districts to find all that out?
Well, to find out if they have money or not, to get it...
No, to find out what their needs are, the condition of their trucks, and condition of their equipment, and what kind of structure they have.
Have we done that? No. You would normally pay a consultant 30 to 40 thousand dollars to do that.
That's, that's kind of my, and I don't want to get into a back and forth, but my point is, is, is we've got to figure out assessment of where we are, and figure out where we want to go, and then how to get there. And so, I don't feel like we, now, I understand y'all just met, you know, but I'd like to know, from these districts being involved in this, and that was kind of the point, to say, okay, where are your needs? Okay? What, what is your equipment shape in? What is the actual, if we're going to look at this as a county-wide thing, we need to find out what all the resources we have.
We have looked at equipment needs.
Of all the districts?
Most all of them, yes. Wouldn't you say so, chief?
Yes, as part of this, as part of that, I was asking, I inspected their first, we found out, we got this, 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 we got this.
So you're telling me you have been through all the districts and inspected their trucks and equipment? And you said you hadn't, but you're saying you have?
You asked me, we haven't.
Right, but you have.
But that has been done.
We provided that information to the ability to, 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 to,[786.12]
There's thirty-one total pumpers. If we were to purchase two a year, it would take us fifteen years to replace thirty-one total pumpers. And that's what our goal and outlook. So when you say can we trim? Sure, we could trim, but then we're not going to do that. We're not going to be able to get ahead. So in fifteen years, the pumpers that we bought by year run one are going to need to be looked at being replaced again.
So that's another question would be, have you looked at the structure of your administrative structure? Is that something you've been tasked to look at or is that...
I do know that Scott Smith and the other fire chiefs have looked at some type of administrative or hierarchy structure for the fire service within the county.
But you know, just from my point of view, it needs to be lean. I mean, because the fewer administrative personnel you have, the more firefighters you put out. And that's...
Oh, administrative, yes. Yeah, but as far as the whole administration, the fire service side administration, yes. And the goal is to put more firefighters out on the street, yes.
Yes, you may or may not know this, so I don't remember all the rules, but I know there's certain sections, homestead exemptions, blah, blah, blah. Lean into, you know, over a certain age, you cut the tax in half. The seventy thousand dollar house, you're actually only going to be taxed on the fifty thousand. So if I'm living in the seventy thousand dollar house on Mill Hill and I'm on fixed income because I'm way beyond retired, I'm only paying taxes on twenty thousand?
So that person would see a significant decrease in what they're paying.
Yep.
Yep. Right.
So the fifty thousand value, it looks like every district, every two, actually will be saving money. By what I see here. I just want to make sure because that really was, especially the person that met that homestead exemption status or whatever, I couldn't remember, but it's the first fifty thousand comes off. So if you live in the seventy thousand dollar house and you meet those requirements, you're only paying taxes on twenty.
Yeah, as far as the cash flow, this is around fifty thousand, second year. It would have been a little more, you know, a little more. You have to pay for it. You have to pay for it. You have to pay for it. So if you get to a little bit, like where you have, you gotta have that cash flow. It's a little bit around seventy, eighty, or you start collecting that cash. But that would need to come up now.
But it's really not a fifty percent reserve because fifty percent of the fifty percent is actually capital money. It's not reserved enough.
Right, but the part of that is operational too.
Correct.
I have a statement and a question for you. First, is it, our intent is not to bash you on this, to, again, thank you for all the work that you guys are doing because I know that y'all have been spending week after week after week. You know, you cast a vision to see the point that you're going. And then you guys, y'all casting the vision and now we're coming up with a strategy to carve a path that makes the most sense to save the taxpayer the most amount of money. We have good or better services and that our ISO rating stays as good, it's better for everyone in the county. My question for you is, what does it entail for you to run a scenario based on these numbers so that we can see who's affected, what's... I mean, you know, there was, Councilman Hendricks had pointed out, you know, you don't want to run into a situation where you've got these one-offs that are really destroy somebody or cause major problems. How do we get those numbers?
Every situation is different. No one will be saying, have the same fire running, have the same land.
So there's not... Okay, but my question for council, then, would it help you guys to see some of the, like they're telling us here, here's the information that was provided to them based on each of the fire districts of what the needs are or the assessments that they got, that some of the stuff that they're looking at to help us kind of carve out that vision?
One of the things I'd like to see is a way to let the people know what's happening and not have it one big shock, one big twenty-five mill in one year. If we phased it in, it's twelve and a half the first year and twenty-five the second year, people would have a better idea of what they're getting into.
I think if you say, you know, if you give them those trace systems, if you want to take it down from there, when you give it to a village, and this is what I think the trade goes, basically, it's all the history today. If you once give it to a village, you're going to allow the roads and roads, I see, not the population. That's what the place like now, the general one. But he's trying to put in a little bit of extra mill, not just for capital, which is for the things that you have to personnel help. They're not trying to do the accurate, the big thing. They're operating the village by CPI, whether, or CPI, I'm saying.
That brings...
Really good to do, well, to have mills in the next group, to have a better law, to have a more accurate game and allow a lot of help. You increase the village, definitely, increases the management and not their operational costs. So that's one thing that you should have to look at, is that, that means, and just a village, you're going to be really, totally, afterward, that. And that was, I just wrote it on the web.
What, a couple of years ago?
Very hard to dig that, and I just wrote on the web to override that. And there were, you know, four or five mills, if I had someone to move, I mean, the personnel costs and the equipment costs, they were tied into that millage, so that's a little bit, I don't know, maybe it's not much more. The only other thing about, you set up a new village, and you have dollars in the works of law.
Well, I got, quick, quick, your plan currently, now we've got the debt that's out there currently, that's sitting out there, that's out there. Your plan is not adding any new debt?
Right, so the plan is to, as we get this established, once that debt is refinanced and once it's paid off, the county should be able to sustain with growth and this millage rate should be able to sustain unless something happens within the county.
And your new equipment that you're helping align, your two bumpers in your tank for a year is out of cash money, not out of new debt?
Not out of new debt. You know, I mean, that's correct. So we won't be coming back to you, asking you for bonds, we're asking you for increased tax millage unless, obviously, conditions change within the county.
I brought several different fire districts in to help. If that been a single wide mobile home, it would've been much. With a vehicle, it takes the same amount of resources to fight a vehicle fire, no matter if it's a hundred thousand dollar vehicle versus a five thousand dollar.
But currently, yes, we've looked at that because currently, every vehicle fire that's ran in Pickens County, out of the eleven, I'm sorry, out of the ten fire districts that's under a fee system, they don't get paid a dime for that vehicle. They don't get paid for the vehicle accidents. They don't get paid for brush fires. They don't get paid for on, on any open land. So, yes, we've looked at that because that's, they, they run more vehicle fires, vehicle accidents and brush fires combined than, than they ever thought about running structure fires. And that's what's paying the bills. So you can have a hundred thousand dollar home and twenty vehicles and you pay just on your home. You can have ten thousand acres of land and you pay zero.
Yeah, I understand that.
Right.
But I, I was looking at, if I had, uh, another house, and I just explained that, but it's, it spends the same amount of resources by, by, you know, car fire, no matter what kind of car it is. And so, I, I guess, and I don't know if it's a vehicle to do that, would that, uh, would that be something, to come up with a fixed rate on a vehicle or a boat or something like that? And of course, anytime you do that, you're going, you're probably going to lower the amount of money to pay in. But, um, where I see, um, maybe some issues is if somebody has to come out and pay fifty dollar fire fee every year on a car.
Well, at the same time, you know, you mentioned it's kind of the way the Sheriff's Department's working. Right. My three thousand dollar Tahoe doesn't use any more or less resources than a fifty thousand dollar pickup truck or seventy thousand dollar pickup truck now, but I'm still being taxed that way. You see what I'm saying? Now, it, it's still, so it's one of those, you gotta look at it, it's not a new concept, it's something that's been done forever. It, it's what's being done, it's how property taxes are worked with. So there is no difference in that, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah, uh, obviously, though, on a three thousand dollar Tahoe, you're taxed on, on that property base. But we're looking at a little bit different situation in that, you're taxed, and I see this as an expenditure of resources. How much does it cost for the fire department to go fight a vehicle fire? I understand it on bigger properties, it's more resources.
But if you look at the Sheriff's Office, it's not costing them a dime more to pull me over in my Tahoe than a seventy thousand dollar pickup truck.
It's a little different situation. This is thing, whatever we do, whatever we do, the public has to buy into this. Now, with all the tax, and somebody said this earlier, with all the tax increases that's going on, this, this is some, I believe most of the public wants a better fire service, I really believe that. But, we do have a limit and we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to find that medium. And it's gonna take a lot of discussion. And I appreciate everything that the board has done, I know they've got some good men on this, and ladies on this board. Uh, and, uh, but this is something that's gonna be very contentious in a lot of different areas of the county. There's, uh, there's a lot of different fire departments and we've got to come up with a good plan from the get-go. It can't be something that we, it's gotta be a really good plan that every, that most everybody bothers with.
I, I like your idea with the cars because you're right, if you look at it as expenditure of resources. You know, first off, I got a problem with the idea of taxing something you already paid for and paid for again and again, and that's a whole different story. But, uh, yeah, anyway, um, but with cars, you're right, there's only a certain amount of resources going to be gone to a, a car fire.
No matter how much.
No matter how much a car's worth. And so, some people that, you know, they buy a new car and then suddenly their fire fee goes way the heck up, you know? Um, I think there's, there's an answer in there somewhere as, as we talk through this.
A car would be fifty dollars a year.
And some fire fees aren't that high.
Sir, did you want to speak, can you state your name and what you do and?
Well, one thing, I've, I've looked at that and one thing, and I will address that with you. One ti, a lot of times, your local fire departments put out that fire before it gets big and becomes a need for, of course.
And I agree with that, but I think we didn't take that attitude. This is one of those areas where they, uh, bring in four, uh, that's going forward, uh, to the county streets.
Thank you for your input.
That brings up a good point, the taxation part, this is gonna be just taxing the county residents, not the cities?
But that's correct.
So the guys in the cities are not affected by this at all?
Uh, if you're a municipality that has its own fire service, then yes, this, this would not be a tax on them.
Currently, the folks that live in the city municipalities are providing their services by the municipality. Like, I live in the city easily, cheap woodwork over here, gets a portion of my tax bill every year to make sure I have fire protection. And I, I really, I appreciate you, I really do, keeping my homeowners insurance low, I really appreciate that. But, you know, it's the system that's already being used in the municipalities, Pickens, Puntins.
To your point, so they're using a millage system?
What millage, what's their millage, what is it, how much is it?
City, city, that's spread out, I don't see that also, uh, fire, combined.
What does millage total for Sheriff's Office here, an EMS? What's millage total for EMS and Sheriff's Office here? I guess.
I was doing that.
No pressure, I just get it.
And keep in mind, they're servicing forty thousand people, we're talking about servicing the.
True, but you got more people to pay that versus, they got limited numbers to pay that.
You're right, yeah, yeah, you got, you got a bigger area to service.
No, it'd be the same, exact same population, your Sheriff's Department.
But it's for Sheriff's Office.
No, actually, no, because I still pay millage, I still pay my property tax, and you're in the county, you're exactly right, sorry. Because that, that's an argument that.
Yeah.
Jerry, I think this is a lot of, a lot of, uh, Jerry, for, 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 that's one of the things we have done to help with various situations that you have ended with, uh, we had, we did, we used alarms since Christmas. And what that means is, if you have a near fire truck, hit this back, doesn't matter if you're from a local community, you have one, they'll come through, they have trucks in the city, they, uh, in the city, they're being moved, all of them safe. The city truck got there, and our folks, out front, they did, 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 uh, fire, and had that happen throughout the county, since we never, it's not like that's supposed to be like the Sheriff of the police department. Uh, speaking of good fires and field fires, one of the things that went to a limited base, folks have the agricultural exemption, they would be paid a penny on that, for, for alcohol ads, so it's not even like, you know, they would be paid an act of concern. Such had been ran into, by, you know, compared with the alcohol ads, so I, I think that's twelve, uh, some of that, and, uh, we would get, get, get the tax bill for alcohol ads. Get four sufficient prices by the way, service, but to get eight, five, nine, ten times, it's worth it.
It, it, it's, it's, it's to address this, you know, we had that brush fire last year, two years ago, remember that big? What we got from the Forest Street Department was equipment, correct? We got equipment from the Forest Street Department. Our firemen are the ones that fought the fire. Exactly. They usually, my, my, what they provide is a heavy equipment and a helicopter potentially, but the guys on the ground are the local firemen. So this idea that they go out and fight the fires is really not the case. What they do is provide us a little bit of equipment, maybe a dump, a, a bulldozer, a helicopter potentially, we go fight the fires, is that correct?
Right, yes, sir.
Okay. So you know he's met with all the boards?
I don't know if he met with all the boards, but he had other times, I spoke to some of the members, we had some members that actually attended the meeting.
Can I tell you, I've had several boards tell me that he's never shown up. Now, Gerald had informed us that he had been to all of them, so there must be some miscommunication on that. Because I've had, I've had at least two boards, I know he's not showing up. I, I would prefer just a roll.
Yes, uh, yes, sir, if you'd state your name and, and, uh, what you represent.